Welcome to the August 23, 2017 Special Budget Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, if we could have the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Kimbenzie.
Here.
Commissioner Conley.
Here.
Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Plard.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds. Mayor Proton Baldini.
Here.
Mayor Campana.
Here. Commissioner Reynolds is not here. Would someone care to make a motion? Commissioner Baldini?
I move we excuse Commissioner Reynolds for this meeting.
And the reason is?
I think a previous commitment.
Sick child.
Sick child? Oh, was that what it is? Okay.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? That carries six zero. Next, we have the agenda to be approved. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Baldini?
Move we approve the agenda and...
Why did?
Is there a second? Commissioner Plard?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That carries six zero. Announcements? I have none. Public comments? I'll open the public comment section for anybody who wishes to address the commission. Now is your time. See it none, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Frazier?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Is there a second? Commissioner Plard?
Second.
See no discussion. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That carries six zero. We move to new business. We have items on the budget to be considered. We're going to start off with city manager, I think.
Welcome and thank you for attending the third of four of these meetings. And just to start out the conversation today, I wanted to just make reference to an email that I sent earlier from John Swenson. I sent to you answering some questions that were asked during his presentation. I think the questions were all answered. However, I just want to make one clarification. You may or may not have read the email yet, but one of the comments from the other night was, "When is the money going to be available for the Prescott Marina buildout?" And the timetable is approval at this time next year with the dockage being built over the winter of 18, 19, and then construction to begin in the spring of 19. And according to John, I mean, this cycle and this timetable is not unusual. This is usually the case, however, in incidents past, it's seemed quicker, but I think this is generally how they do it. So, and one other clarification, you will read in that email that he makes mention that the boaters are more excited to see it happening in 18 than 19, and what he meant to write was they're more excited to see it happening in 19 as opposed to 18 because they feel that those that might be displaced by the new construction have another year to be there, if that makes sense. If you recall, the new construction will reduce the size of the slips, the number of the slips, and the longer it takes us to get it fixed, the more time those that might be eliminated have to be there. So, there is favorability from the slip users. And that's all I have to comment about, so I'll turn it over to Gary.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for, again, showing up. I appreciate the participation. For anybody watching at home, again, the budget is exactly what we're looking at, is on the city website, so please go to the city's front page website, and there's a link. Just press on the link, and it'll take you, and you will see exactly what we're looking at this afternoon. I did have two handouts that I presented before the meeting. One is the schedule for today. This is revised just a tad from earlier ones presented. I forgot to put in a new fund that we have, so II is a new fund, and then that was the only change. And Scott is on vacation, I believe, but just before he left on Friday, he gave me the new proposed fee schedule for the solid waste, so I presented that to you as well. And I believe Kurt will be presenting that a little bit later this afternoon. So, with that, today's theme is community development and public works and utilities, and we'll start out with Dennis. So, take it away, Dennis.
Thanks, Gary. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present our budget to you. So, a little bit of background on community development. As you well know, we are tasked with facilitating ideas in the community, designing them, and building them. If you look around town, you would have a pretty good understanding that we're in the building phase of a lot of those ideas right now. There's essentially in a ballpark figure of about $300 million of combined public and private investment in the city of Marquette this year alone. That does face some challenges for our staff, and yet they are challenged. I'd like to commend them because, in my opinion, they are definitely performing brilliantly and professionally. We have staff that issue permits, and of course, when you have a lot of investment, those permits are high. There's a lot of site plan reviews, so Andrea Landers and Michael Anderson in our zoning department are the face of the department that interact with those developers. Really, really challenged this year with the number of permits that they're processing. Our engineering staff, led by city engineer Keith Whittington, we have folks out on every single project. Our field technician engineers are tasked with each one of those projects. They are the contact between Keith and the contractor, and in some cases, the community. And those folks are busy, too. They're out on site inspecting the materials, making sure that the detour signs are up, so on and so forth. And as a side note, they're doing a really good job because I just about had a stroke on County Road 557 last night with the way the county was handling something. So, although it may seem like a challenge to us in the community, be confident that you have good people on that job. Our code enforcement division, just for an example, Michael Anderson has processed over 1,200 property violations in the last year alone. They're busy. There's a lot of things going on, and they're very, you know, from the administrative assistant that greets people at the doors to all the way up to myself when I'm putting out a fire or whatever it may be, a political fire, or somebody's upset, or managing the department. It's been a challenge, and the people are performing well. So, with that, I just wanted to take the opportunity that I do every year to let them know that they're doing a good job and it's not going unnoticed. I'd like to start out on our fee schedule for engineering, which is on page 26.
Excuse me, Dennis. Commissioner Baldini has a question.
1,200 property violations?
1,200 various violations.
Like what?
Well, we could have long grass, which has been a big one in the city this year. International property maintenance code, which could be broken windows, siding falling off a building. We could have zoning violations would be mixed in there as well.
Thank you.
If you break it down to work hours, that's well over 10 violations a day. Kid's got good situational awareness, for sure. So, page 26 is the fee schedule for engineering. Any changes to the fee schedule are indicated in bold. I'm assuming that we're doing that through the whole thing, so it shouldn't be too new to you. Anything that's in bold here is what we would consider a modest cost increase, and it's directly related to the cost of labor. As defined in labor contract, people get raises or the cost of business goes up associated with that. So, we have a few fees in here that are related to personnel doing them where you see some modest increases. Are there any questions on that fee schedule? If not, I will move on just very briefly to page 45, which is our revenue page for engineering. Our year-end estimate this year is about rounded up to $750,000 plus or minus. We're at 740. Next year, we expect a little bit of a modest increase, up to 785,000. Most of those come from the cost of our fixed charges that would be working on that. So, looks like it's pretty much going to stay within the same ballpark.
Commissioner Plard?
Dennis, just a quick question for my clarification. Looking at 476, road permits, off-street parking, we get that many requests for people to park? Is that parking on their front lawn, for example?
No. Right-of-way permits are permits where a contractor could be working and would need to block the sidewalk or do some work in the right-of-way, say that they're going to work on a person's driveway, and they needed to tear up a portion of the sidewalk or something like that. If a business is working downtown, working on the facade, they have to close the sidewalk. That's a right-of-way permit. Any work that would be on city property is considered a right-of-way permit.
I see.
Off-street parking is, if we were to get a situation where somebody was building an off-street parking lot, engineering reviews it in conjunction with the zoning department. Those are really minimal. Most of that fee that comes in is from the right-of-way permits.
I see. Thank you.
Commissioner Kimbenzie?
One quick question. Is that where we would steer people that want to plant plants in the, I guess, kind of in the right-of-way? I mean, I get people that ask me all the time.
No.
Do we have a permit for that?
No. People that, we generally allow people, the city policy is that people can, as long as it's not an invasive species, there's people that put plenty of gardens and things like that in the park, what we would call the parkway.
Commissioner Conley?
Could you tell me again? I think I missed it. What is a fixed charge? What's an example of that?
Fixed charge is our, kind of, the way we spread admin costs to the utility funds. In engineering's case, it strictly is going to, like, the water and sewer and stormwater funds for the engineering work that they do for the construction projects.
Thank you.
I'd like to move on to page 88, which is the fact sheet for the engineering department. Basically, you know, I talked about what these folks do. They inspect the utility projects. They survey and design, do plans, assist in plan review. Of particular note that I failed to mention is our city engineer Keith Whittington is our capital improvements plan administrator. There's a lot of work that went into that the past couple of years. That process has been completely overhauled, and as Commissioners know that went on the field trip with us, there's a lot of background work that goes into that. We also support the rest of the city through our GIS department and provide staff support to city commission, planning commission, and primary liaison with MDOT on a lot of the projects and things like that. Moving on to the next page, it looks at authorized positions. We're not adding any positions this time. And our program statistics, for anybody that's interested in that, you can look at the linear feat that we've been replacing, extending, and so on and so forth. Pretty significant to note that another good program that we have is the sidewalk program, and that's particularly important in a community that considers itself walkable. I'd like to move on to page 90, which is the expenditures that we're looking at for 2018 fiscal year. A lot of these are pretty much the same. I've got two notes on here of special consideration under 775, which is our repair and maintenance supplies. We have money in there for recalibration of our survey and GPS equipment. Obviously, that's pretty important. We need to know where we're at on those field projects. And in our professional and contractual, we are asking for $20,000, which is, we list it as unanticipated consulting services. A good portion of that money goes towards the wetland monitoring. The Marquette, we've been working really good with the Marquette Community Conservation District, and we have one wetland of significance that is up close to the island. That is a mitigation project from the McClellan Avenue, and because we had to recreate that wetland to land bank, something, some work that we did there, it has to be inspected annually, and invasive species have to be removed. Now, with the Duke Life Point project, we're going to have two wetlands to monitor, so we'll again be reaching out to the conservation district for that work, and that is reflected in 801 as well.
Excuse me, Commissioner Baldini?
How long do we have to monitor the wetland?
That, I...
10 years.
Thank you. Okay. You're good?
Good.
Okay. Are there any other questions on engineering division, community development?
Item number 943. The rental? What does that, is that due to the life point shift?
That's the rent. Since they're relocating to the new municipal service center, that is their share of the rent for that facility.
That's a yearly thing, then? Every year?
Pardon?
So, every year, it's about the same?
It should be right around the same each year. That's the goal, anyway.
How come in 2017 it was zero?
Because it was torn down, and there wasn't a place for them to rent.
Okay.
That was when they were, they had relocated to Lakeview Arena, I believe, and so there wasn't rent charged.
The shift.
Correct.
Okay. Good.
Okay, if there's no further questions on that, I'd like to go back, if we could, to page 22, and we'll go through the fee schedule for Board of Zoning Appeals in the zoning department. Similar to the engineering fee schedule, these proposed fees in here, there are some that have very modest increases of a couple bucks. That is reflected due to personnel costs of the people that will be looking at those as well. I think there was even, there might have been one or two in here that actually go down due to the realignment of personnel, and we did add one brand-new one, which is called the zoning verification letter. There are a number of companies that, their specific job is, they will get hired by a client, and they will go out and seek information for that client on a piece of property. Normally, it's information that they could look up by our property information look-up that we've done, so on and so forth. But what they tend to do is call one of our staff members and put the ball in their court. And we have instituted a $59 fee for a zoning verification letter of that to recoup the cost that our staff are going to do when a company refuses to use the online information that's available to them. Other than that, it's just, it's very, very modest increases, and like I said, in some cases, a decrease due to personnel. Are there any questions? And if we could, then we'll go to page 34. These are the planning department fees. We have the same personnel working on these, and there are no changes recommended in these this year because our break-even fees have remained the same on that, so. If there are no questions on that, I can move on to page 91.
Commissioner Baldini?
I have a question or a comment. So, our fee is based upon our cost. So, if all the senior members in the department retire, and we bring in all new people at a different income level, theoretically, our fees are less.
But in my department's case, it's not based upon the senior personnel. It would be the person doing the job. But in theory, yes, if that person is maxed out on their pay scale per the union contract, and somebody knew where to come in, like in our case, a couple of the planning ones that are looked at, we have different personnel looking at it, and another one would be like the rental code. Previously, you had Ian doing it. He was at the higher end of the rate. Now, you have somebody different doing it, so they're at the lower end, so the cost goes down a little bit. So, it can fluctuate.
I appreciate the theory, but I mean, it's a sort of a strange code that, not a code, but it just, so if you end up having to permit from a department with more senior members, you're paying a higher fee theoretically, and not just your department, but across board. Okay, we're not going to solve it today. Thank you. Let's just...
Okay.
Commissioner Conley?
What's CDRT review? Again, a conditional use permit. It says with CDRT review and without...
Yeah, that's the community development review team. That's a team. If it's at a certain level, we will, it requires us to bring in fire department, engineering, public works, and those personnel will be involved in that type of level of review, and that is the community development review team. Also includes police.
Commissioner Frazier?
I heard from contractors that somebody wants to put in a driveway. It's an expensive fee to the city, not only to the homeowner, or say, you know, cost is one thing, but they say they have to pay a certain fee to the city to approve a driveway or, you know, somebody said they have some property on Prescott that would replace a couple poles that hold up their house, and said, "Well, it's really, not only is it expensive to do, which is one thing, but the fee, is it like a lot of people having to look at it, or what's the deal with that?"
Well, I guess a fee for a driveway involves a lot of things. The purpose behind it, for one, is to make sure that people don't go digging up a driveway and dig up our utilities that the community's made a huge investment in. So, you know, part of the reason we look at that is primarily right there. You know, we need to have an engineer look at it to make sure that if we have utilities buried there, they're annotated. Not everyone calls Miss Dig, you know? Generally, when we have a situation like that, we, Greg Borzak, when he worked for us, he'd do out and do the Miss Dig work himself. So, I mean, there is a purpose behind that permit. Okay. Page 91 is the fact sheet for planning. This is the long-range planning component for the city, including transportation, general maintenance of the master plan. Our city planner is also our zoning administrator, busy guy. We do a lot of zoning work that really ties it up, and we do appreciate the commission's consideration for funding last year for the land development code because it would be impossible to do that in-house with the caseload that our city planner has. Nonetheless, the planning commission serves as a planning commission liaison in addition to the duties of planner and zoning administrator, and is working with the planning commission on an update to the master plan, which should be before the city commission within a couple of months. I think the last, they review it every year, and they had to make a couple of changes this year related to the zoning ordinance to make sure that everything is tight when you go into the zoning ordinance update, to make sure that those things jive together. The next sheet is page 92, which is zoning.
Commissioner Conley?
Salaries, authorized positions, city planner. That's a significant jump. Is that a, is that a raise, a merit pay, or what, how do you...
Yeah, that is a step increase in accordance with the pay scale. Onto the zoning component. The component of our office that takes money from people and quite often deals with a lot of folks that aren't happy. God bless Andrea. She does a good job here. But our zoning and code enforcement official falls under here as long as, and as well as half of the planning and zoning official and portion of the administrative assistant. This is the component that deals with day-to-day permitting, sign fence zoning, property maintenance, going out and catching the bad folks that aren't mowing their lawn, and so on and so Page 93 has combined expenditures for planning and zoning. Although we have separate fact sheet for them, they're combined expenditures. For the most part, we have everything in here as status quo from last year's ask, with the exception of professional and contractual, which has gone down significantly because the majority of that money was budgeted for the land development code last year. This coming year, we'd like to ask for $15,000 as a kind of a contingency fund for special project assistance, and as well out of that account comes transcription for the planning commission. I do foresee some special project assistance. Part of what we were tasked with in the strategic plan was to deal with the Hartwood property, and we are currently working to secure some appraisals for the development portions of that property. I can, my experience tells me that when we get into, the commission gets into actually looking at the Hartwood again, there is the likelihood that we may have some considerable discussion that may require assistance with that.
Commissioner Baldini?
Line 722, the retirement goes from $54,097, not quite 100% increase, but why? I mean, obviously, the computers tell us why, or tell us about a job.
This is the actuarial studies that are done, and actually, quite a few of the departments, we're seeing these same kind of types of increases, and it's just what we're required to pay for the, not only the current pensioners, but the unfunded accrued liability as well.
Thank you.
That closes out planning, but I still have to say, planning is important, right? Former city planner here, I got to tell you how important planning is. Keep it around. It's good for you. 94 is the next one, strategic development. This one's going away. We don't have much to say about that one. That was an account primarily where we had funded the lobbyist out of, and a lot of, a lot of that had come out of the administration costs, so we decided to get rid of that one this year. The last one would be road safety.
Commissioner Baldini has one question?
I had a question. I, I had a question on that because I know we, we funded part of that Smart Zone, but we never seem to hear anything about it. I mean, I see the Smart Zone out there publicly, but.
Yeah, the Smart Zone, they, they do give presentations to the commission from time to time. Think they're due in September, so usually once a year and if special events are happening, then we'll have Ray, Ray Johnson speak to the commission.
They just got a big chunk of money from the state of Michigan combining, I think, the Smart Zone, Vent NMU.
Correct, and he'll be talking about that at the September presentation.
Okay, and the last one I have is page one-thirty-seven. This is the road safety fund. This is part of the Lundin money and this is for development and maintenance of annual safety plan. We have a Lundin corridor plan that's been done and it's actually being implemented this year. You can see these dollars being spent on Wright Street as we speak. And that's primarily where those funds end up is into implementing that safety aspect of the plan. That closes out community developments portion, at least my presentation wise. I'd be happy to answer any questions or attempt to answer them at the pleasure of the commission.
Commissioner Frasier.
It's a quick question. I didn't know, I mean, obviously, the city works on the way to plant sidewalks everywhere, but I was thinking, have you ever thought about planning, you know, Wright Street comes in behind the dome? And I saw somebody running that day down the sidewalk, but then they turned to go up Wright Street, you know, where the shortcut is off Lake Shore, goes by the dome there. There's no sidewalk on either side of that little road, so I don't know if the city's ever talked about putting a sidewalk on either side of that road possibly or dirt path or something for people to ride their bikes on or walk on if they're coming from, if they're leaving Lake Shore to go up Wright Street or either way or something maybe?
So it would be on the Wright Street extension between Presque Isle and Lake Shore Boulevard?
Yep, that, that little, it goes about the dome there, yeah. I don't know if NMU may be funded a little bit because it's part of their property or something, I don't know.
Yeah.
Just something you could look at. It's nothing, you know, look at maybe that and then the other thing I thought about was maybe a, a small extension to the sidewalk along Lake Shore to go down to Madison Park. I see a lot of people with a lot of stuff going on, walking in the roads. It might be more safety oriented than anything. Just, just something to look at. Maybe this winter you could, you and your engineer can sit and drive around and engineer that for me.
Duly noted and, and David just mentioned to me from behind there that we have, he's worked on a bike plan, a non-motorized plan for the city that will be in the new master, in the updated master plan that has looked at that, so. Thank you.
Okay, we're all set.
Next up will be public works and utilities and Kurt and I believe Eric will be presenting.
Thank you, commission mayor, for the opportunity to present the Department of Public Works Utilities Budget. Little background on our department. It consists of three divisions and eight, eight departments. The Department of Public Works, it's really the department that really all the operations are run out of. We provide basic services for, to, to, for the community so that they can enjoy the city of Marquette. Like all departments, there's a lot of key people. Some of the management staff and administrative assistants I like to recognize. Probably two important ones, our administrative assistants, Melissa Erica and Pam Greenleaf. All the numbers you see here, they really are funneled through them, so a lot of thanks to their work. Superintendent Scott Conbenzi oversees water distribution, sewer collection, solid waste and, and, street, in streets. Eric Steeman is, oversees the facilities, which you can see the last year has been a very important year, so Eric's been key instrumental in the success of the new building. And forestry, cemetery, and another important department is motor pool. Right now, the superintendent of water sewer, or water and wastewater is vacant. That was my old position and I continue to oversee the water and wastewater facilities. And once again, it's a total team effort and again, I think it's the department's goal really is to maintain our services, improve our, our services through efficiencies. One thing, the last couple of years, we've had a turnover. A lot of seasoned employees have retired, so we're bringing in younger employees and it takes time to, to learn how to operate, like to say a plow. But I'll tell you one thing, the guys are getting really good. In the budget presentations, sort of, it take team here. Eric's gonna take a few of them. I'll take a few of them. We do have a new budget, the fuel system. We decided to make that into an enterprise fund, so we're, we partner with other entities like the, like Northern Michigan joined us and Mark Tran and we added a few dollars, or not a few, a few cents on each gallon of gas and that goes directly for replacement cost. So with that, if you have any questions right now? Okay, I'm gonna, I promised Gary I wouldn't get goofed up on the numbers of the pages, so hopefully I can follow through with that. Going to the first budget, one-on-one, two-six-five, City Hall. That would be on page sixty-four. Eric will be presenting that.
Good afternoon. When you look at the City Hall budget, we're fairly status quo from last year when you take out capital outlay. We're about three percent higher than last year with that capital outlay out of there. That accounts for some increases in some contracted services that we're anticipating with the custodial cleaning. That's been flat now for four years and we're out for a rebid here coming up in October. So we're expecting probably about a three percent increase in that. And then also with our HVAC services contract, we're expecting a three percent increase in that as well. And then the other item of note.
Commissioner Baldini has a question.
I have a question, which is probably going to show up here for next year. We have all the maintenance for the hours for City Hall. We're going to do some major renovations. I mean, should we expect to see the locks, the windows, things like that go down?
Yeah, I, I would especially expect like the HVAC. I mean, there's still going to be, you know, maintenance, normal maintenance, PMs and things, but a lot of the emergency repairs, we're doing things like that. You're going to see that go down. Doors and locks and windows, I mean, those will all be new with the renovation. Electrical maintenance should go down as well as, you know, lighting maintenance as well.
Over here on the next page, expenditures, estimate of seven-hundred, seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, next year seventy-five thousand. I presume that money goes to the Johnson Fund.
Yeah, not, yeah, some, a portion of that will. So what, what we would have normally have spent in lighting and, and some of those emergency HVAC repairs, that'll be separated out by Gary and then that'll go in towards to pay for it. So our actual operating will go down. When you, you see it next year, operating expenses will go down, but a portion of what used to be there will go back into the repayment.
Will, I suppose this is a question for Gary then. Will we have to have another line or some other way to demonstrate that in the budget? Because we will be saving revenue, but some of that revenue is committed to pay the debt.
Correct. If you recall, the very first session, we discussed that a little bit to where we're presenting the budget without the Johnson Controls information in here and once we get the information we need, then we'll be presenting a budget adjustment. But right now, it, I can't sit here and tell you what numbers are going to go in what direction because I don't know, so.
But I, I, I believe, at least for, as one commissioner, it would be good for the budget for next year and the following years to reflect that so that we are continually reminded of the advantage and where that money does go. Because it could be very easily starting to wander off as we've all been involved in some things, yeah.
Oh, yes. No, this is, this is large enough to where we aren't going to let it wander off. It's, it could be a budget killer if we don't handle it correctly, so.
Anything else on City Hall? Moving on to Cemetery, page seventy. Yep, and then the fee schedule is on twenty-three. So there, this was talked about quite a bit last year as to where our fees were at in regards to where our costs are at and, you know, we took a hard look at, at the fee schedule and we did, on page twenty-three, we're about, an average of about a seven percent increase across the, you know, the, like the spaces for ground burials and also for columbarium spaces. The one item we did up considerably was the overtime costs to, to cover weekend burials and things after hours. And a lot of that came from looking at some of the other cemeteries in the area to see where we're at. Right now, we're the, the highest in the area for space costs, whether it be a columbarium or a normal traditional grave space. So we're leading the pack on that, but where we noticed is our, our overtime hours for burials were considerably lower. So we, we tried to bump those up and put them in line with the other areas to try to generate some additional revenue. When you, when you look at the way that on page seventy, the, the estimated revenues are, we are pretty conservative as to what, what we're expecting. And there's a little bit of discrepancy with what's on the fee schedule, but when you look at this fee schedule, we're looking probably at about a eighteen thousand dollar increase in revenue with those additional fees. So with that said, we're actually, when you take out, again, capital outlay out of cemetery, we're actually just slightly down from last year, only about point-three percent, but it is, you know, maybe eight hundred dollars less. Of that, there was, I know a lot of concern last year with why it costs so much to run the cemetery and part of, part of the reason is really the cemetery is just another park. I mean, a lot of people use it for walking. I, I mean, it's, it's really quite heavily used just to, to be there to walk it and stroll through it and it's, it's a pretty important park to the city, not only just for the burials, but just for people like to visit it. And, you know, really the only revenue generator is the fees that we get for the burials and such and selling the plots. And it's, it's kind of like Presque Isle, yeah, I mean, we rent out the pavilion a little bit and we make a little bit of money, but it certainly doesn't cover, you know, the cost of Presque Isle to, to maintain it and, and operate it. So it's, it's going to be tough to make it a budget neutral. We're trying to, to move it further along the line by increasing these fees and we felt that a sudden increase in fees, we don't want to price ourselves out of the market. You know, you know, people expect things to go up as the years go on, but to just add a twenty or thirty percent increase, we, we couldn't justify.
Commissioner Baldini.
Can I buy a plot on time? I mean, I, I come in, I buy a plot and can I pay you over five or ten years?
I don't believe so, not, not at this point.
I'm just wondering.
I don't think there's a payment plan, but I know Gary might be able to answer.
Very often, people don't think about it until they need it and I'm just wondering if we talk to the mortuary people.
We take credit cards.
Okay, yeah. I, I just wondered, yeah, okay.
Commissioner Conley.
Go ahead.
I, I appreciate the effort of looking at, taking a hard look at the fees. And a couple of places, another one was Parks and Rec where they, they took a hard look in, in bringing that more into line. And I appreciate there's a market price out there too. So, thanks for, for looking at this and at least bringing it up. Question for our city attorney over there, if we can pry him away. Is, are cemetery fees, would they be regulated by Headley and the Bolt decision? Do we have to justify that by the cost or could we? So it's not, it's, okay, it's, it's a fee for a service. We don't have to justify it by our costs? Okay, just, just for curiosity, as we keep maybe pushing forward and looking at raising our, our fees to, to cut that gap down even more in years' future, but I appreciate the effort you made this year.
Nothing else on Cemetery?
Commissioner Frasier.
Maybe you guys get with the funeral directors, have a little fundraising party. I mean, all the other community have fundraisers. Get with the funeral directors, have a fundraising event at Lakeview, maybe donate some money to Lakeview. Have a fundraising event for the, for the sites, for the, all the park sites. Raise money for all the people that can't raise money anymore, you know, because they're, they're buried six feet down, but I mean, people would probably love to raise money for their family members that are put away somewhere.
Okay, no other questions. We'll move on to Public Works four-four-one.
The fee is on page thirty-six, fee schedule. We do definitely look at this every year. We took a very hard look at it back in twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen. That was the year of the deep freeze. We really, you know, we had an opportunity to really take a look at, you know, the, the cost of, you know, providing the service to thaw pipes. It is a pretty much unchanged. We didn't feel that there was anything that really stood out that really deserved to have a major increase or decrease. No question. If, move to the fact sheet. It starts on page eighty-three. This account, basically, I, we like to look at it as a sort of a home account. This is sort of a, a account where a lot of operations are, are charged out of administration, street maintenance, parks maintenance and forestry. And then if you look at authorized positions, once again, a lot of these positions are, are charged to different areas. So we, what we did this year in the fact sheet is we grouped all of the positions under this fact sheet. Some of the program statistics, once again, it, it, they're pretty stable. I think the staff does a great job about, you know, documentation. It sort of gives you an idea of what, what items that we deal with on a day-to-day basis. Questions on that? Moving to the expense side on page eighty-five. We pretty much, I like to refer, this is, this is pretty much an unchanged budget with the exception of a, you know, a couple percent increase in salaries and pension and health insurance. Under the notes, we do have three items in there that will be worth mentioning. It was requested that we include in capital outlay, the Banshell gravel road. We're going to plan on gravel, or peaving that next year. Picnic Rock's parking lot, that definitely needs to be, you know, redone. And then another one that was requested was to take a look at the Presque Isle erosion control for, from.
Black Rock, right?
Yeah, Black Rocks. By, by Black Rocks. So we plan on doing.
What exactly are you going to do at Black Rocks?
We've, the, the Presque Isle Committee has offered a few suggestions. Everything, I believe, from putting, bringing in trees there. Everything, I believe, from putting, bringing in trees there. We feel five thousand dollars is enough to, you know, at least, you know, make a dent in, you know, preventing any worse erosion.
Are they going to build a fence there? I mean, you go there now and they still really don't, they don't have anything.
Yeah, I don't have the details.
Yeah.
A lot of the, that money was requested through the Community Services Department, through John Swenson, through there. They had talked with the Presque Isle Parks Committee and came up with some solutions. And I don't know all the details on it, but just because of the way that the funding works, the funding comes out of Public Works for the materials and the equipment. And then I believe they're going to get in-kind labor or something from volunteers. And I'm not quite sure how they plan on doing it.
No, it's just as you go out there, if you look at it, you know, something's got to be done, you know, sooner rather than later because it's, it's falling apart or kids climb up on, and they go right up the front there.
Yeah.
I mean, if you don't put a fence up or put a walkway up.
I know there was talk of covering it with brush or there's talk of using folders, and I'm not a hundred percent sure.
That won't do it.
Yeah, what their plan was. So we can look into that and get back with you for sure.
Uh, so, again, what's the next step out there? Just, because I've had people ask me about that. They're concerned that it's just peeling away, actually. What, I mean, do we have a plan? Does the Presque Isle Committee have a plan?
Yeah, they do have a plan and the money that they asked for was in part of their plan, so I just don't have the details on what exactly that is.
All right.
I think we could probably provide some sort of a technical memo of the options.
I was hoping you would have gotten it done beginning of the summer because, you know, every year you wait. Commissioner Conley?
Question, question for Gary. So the parks maintenance is under the Department of Public Works budget rather than in the Parks and Rec budget, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So, so the true cost of running the parks is kind of distributed between the two budgets?
Correct. It's a little difficult and I just want to put it out publicly that that was not my decision to do it that way.
It's funny you should ask. Because myself and some other administrators are taking a hard look at exactly that. The lineage, the flow chart, if you will, of how some of that flows through Public Works, facilities, parks, I mean, that to me is also confusing. And I guess what I'm saying is we're going to look at seeing if we can streamline some of that, make it more efficient. I don't know that we will, but I want the administrators involved to come up with some solutions or ideas to take a look at that. So I agree with you on that.
I, I think you'd have a better way to track your costs if it all fell in one. I'm not arguing one way or the other, but I'm not an, I don't have an accountant's mind, obviously. But just seems that if I were trying to say, how much does this, whatever it is, this entity or project, anything costs me, I'd want to put it all in one, in one bucket.
From Gary's perspective, that is, I'm sure, true. But from mine, it's more about efficiency of getting the job done correctly and in the proper sequence without having to, I don't want to say work across department lines, but coordinate across department lines. So we're going to take a look at that. And if I could just take a moment to go back to the Black Rocks. The reason it's taken so long is that the erosion and the other concerns out there have really taken off in the last eighteen months or so, or two years. And it was tasked to the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee to examine that, work through the details, and make some recommendations to us as to how to proceed with dealing with that problem. So that process took a little bit longer, like a lot of governmental processes. And what, the solutions that I've heard about and been informed about are kind of what you're suggesting, Mr. Mayor. I mean, we're looking at fencing, we're looking at funneling foot traffic in specific areas as opposed to just general areas. And then the areas that we funnel it, protect it so that the erosion is preventable in those areas. I mean, we have other issues with that same scenario. Parking, for example, is also part of that in that on a hot day, the cars are lined up for a long way up the, around the island. So we're trying to look at a complete plan to deal with it. And hopefully by, well, hopefully by the spring of next year, we'll have something ready and in place to at least do what we can to deal with it.
Commissioner Baldini?
Then we also, let's not forget about the dark sky proposal, which will have people out there. But you talk about, picking up on Commissioner Conley's point about how do we delineate between the parks recreation? I asked at the first budget meeting, and we're not going to solve it this year, but we really need a true picture of what we spend on recreation in case we ever do come up with some sort of authority or some sort of plan. We really should work on that. And, and maybe it's, maybe, and not taking it away from Gary, but it would take a lot of work and maybe we find some fees to hire a consultant and say, Gary, they work with Gary.
You could give it to Gary.
Okay, all right. I'm more than happy to do that, but, but I think down the road, we really should get a clear picture of what we spent because that's part of the recreation of this community, what makes this community go. And you're not going to solve it right away, but.
We can actually provide those numbers. It just takes a little work to do. It's not as easy as just looking at a fund and saying this is what it costs.
That's Commissioner Conley's point, yeah.
Exactly. And I agree wholeheartedly. But Mike's the boss, so I do what Mike says.
Commissioner Frazier?
Guys, you guys are catching up a few things. If you guys, I haven't really driven through, but the shortcut, you know, around the alley goes by between the park and the ban shell, that dirt road's been complained about for years. You guys found a solution? I haven't looked to see if it's been paved or gravelled. Do you guys gravel that or?
No, we do, we do have maintenance on it on a regular basis. It is time-consuming. It's, but as you mentioned in the notes of the budget, we do, we're having it, it'll be taken care of next year.
It'll be fixed, you know, touch it up and make sure.
Yep, we'll be addressing the, you know, the pavement on it, the stormwater.
Do something, that's a good idea. It's happened to redo it every year because I know during our lovely winters, it gets beaten up pretty good, so.
And that'll be all taken care of next year.
Maybe I'll fix it, you know, I've heard, you know, erosion of Black Rocks, I've heard about that. And, you know, you guys put, somebody put a log cross from one spot to prevent people from walking there. I saw pictures of people just climbing out right behind the log. They thought, oh, it's just a cool place to climb. And I've heard parking issues and I heard somebody, people I know on the Pipe Park Committee suggested the tennis courts they use for storage now, make that a parking ramp. For, is there parking along there? Use those for, start using just for storage, parking bags? Make that a parking ramp. And don't forget, he has her checkbook, he has a checkbook made, so, I mean.
Where would one find, and I know it's not a big a brisk business, where people buy park benches. Is that much of an income? It's not a lot. Every so often, somebody will buy a bench?
Yeah, it's in the, in the fee schedule.
Oh, okay.
I don't, yeah, I don't have that in front of me.
I know New York, New York City charges ten thousand. I don't think we can go there.
No, I think we're on, I want to say it's around fifteen hundred.
About fifteen hundred. And we got certain standards that we require. Moving right along, next account would be one-oh-one, four-four-four sidewalks on page eighty-six. Fact sheet gives a little bit of, you know, program statistics, how many miles we have. We do have a plowing program that we plow certain sidewalks, you know, mostly, you know, around the schools, critical areas. We do review that every year to, you know, try and find different routes to be more efficient. But I think all in all, we do receive some very nice compliments of the job that Public Works does, especially, you know, around the school area. A lot of times, we don't get to those right away, but every effort is made. The main roads are a priority. Moving to expenditures, if you look at the notes, a lot of the sidewalks under capital outlay are part of capital projects that we'll be doing next year for the street projects. And I think as Dennis mentioned earlier, we do spend approximately a hundred thousand dollars a year for replacement of sidewalks. If there's no further questions, we can move along to Fund two-oh-two and two-oh-three. That would be on page one-ten. Okay, on, on major streets, the department consists of major street routine maintenance, major street non-motorized, major street routine preservation, major street winter maintenance, and major street for state. Basically, it's the functions of maintaining streets within the city of Marquette. Under, you can see under program statistics, if you could review that, if there are questions. Moving on to, on page one-eleven, under the revenues, those revenues are done by a formula based on the state's formula that they won't share, is that right?
Well, a lot of this is funded by Act fifty-one money, which is tax you pay at the gas pump. And again, such as sales tax, gas tax, we're the same way where just because you buy gas in Marquette, that doesn't mean we get the tax money on that. It's all sent to Lansing. And then Lansing has some formulas in which they divvy out the money to the municipalities. And the snow allocation is the one that we don't really, I know they have a formula for it, but for whatever reason, the state never really has been willing to share it. So when it comes to budgeting for snow allocation, it's just sort of a crapshoot. We, we don't really know going in. But the other numbers usually come in pretty close to what the state recommends. And it's based on, like, for major street fund, it's based on the number of miles of major streets. In local street, it's based on the number of miles of local street. And also the city's population as well factors in. And then anything not, so because we don't collect enough Act fifty-one money to pay for the major and local streets, one of the biggest funding sources is from the general fund, which usually between the two funds, it's, it's fairly consistent, usually about one-point-three, one-point-four million dollars each year.
So moving along, if there are any questions?
Kurt?
Yeah.
Uh, we found out that we're not painting the streets with lines, bike lanes. You alluded to that a month ago or something. Is that going to be included in here or is that going to be a new item somewhere?
Yep. Thanks for reminding me. One thing this year, for next year, the city, in the budget, we've included equipment to do some of the light, some of the painting of the streets in-house.
Where is it on page nine?
It would be on page one-twelve.
It's on one-twelve.
Under the, under the notes. We have, we're allocating, we're requesting a hundred fifty thousand dollars for, for equipment. And we're going to be taking, putting together a plan so that we can get, in the past, it's been very difficult getting a contractor up here. A lot of times, if you, there's only one contractor that ever bids on the painting of the streets in Marquette. And usually, a lot of times, they come at whenever they can. And normally, a lot of times, it's in, it's in August, right before winter. So our plan is to do a portion of the painting, like the parking spots downtown, Third Street, crosswalks. And then there's some areas that we'll still have to contract out, like for the line striping. But I think it'll be, in the long term, it's going to definitely be a cost saving, savings. And not only that, we'll be able to do it in, early on in the year. So I'd say, right after our spring cleanup, we'll sign, you know, two or three people for that task for over like a two or three week period. So that's a plan that's being developed right now, and we plan on implementing it this spring.
Commissioner Conley?
Thank you for that, Kurt, because really, it's the crosswalks and bike lanes and things like that that wear out first. They wear out, seem to wear out faster than centerlines. And to have those repainted in the spring, it would be great. And I like the idea of bringing it in-house and saving, it sounds like it'll pay for itself. Is centerline painting such a specialized equipment that we're not going to be able to, that wouldn't, we couldn't justify that?
Yeah, a truck, I believe, is a lot over a million dollars just to, for centerlines, so they're, they're not cheap.
Okay.
The, we've been looking at this for a couple of years now. And the, it's as close to a monopoly as you're going to get because the people that do this kind of work basically farm out certain areas of the state and country and agree not to compete with each other, is the way I interpret it. And the price has been going up exponentially every year. And we spend anywhere from a hundred seventy-five to two-hundred thousand dollars a year and not get a hundred percent done. And every year, we've had to cut back on the amount we've been painting to keep the cost at somewhat manageable and affordable. And like Kurt mentioned, you know, they come when they want. And it's always bothered me that the largest community in the Upper Peninsula was getting stripes painted in August or September, just in time to be snowed on, when other communities get it right away. I mean, if you, if you notice, MDOT gets it, they come through May, you know, and, or early June, and there's, it's the same company in a lot of, a lot of respects, or a lot of times. And there's no incentive for them to service us in any beneficial way. So between Kurt, Eric, and Scott, they've been looking hard at, at the cost related to doing it in-house. It may at some point require the addition of a new body in Public Works, but if it does, it'll be at entrance level and it'll be a body that we can use when not line painting, doing other things like snow plowing and things of that nature. So we're giving that a good look.
Commissioner Baldini?
Might some other communities in the U.P. want to look at a benefit from us to provide for them? I mean, not something you go out and market right away, but your manager meetings or something.
I think Kurt has indicated he's looked at some of that, and I guess that's something I'm willing to always consider. But again, unless it's something that we can find profitable and not detrimental to our own service, I think it's probably not a bad idea.
One more thing, we are looking at the different types of paint you could use. You know, there's, if you pay a little bit more, there's a, you know, better quality paint. And, and those are the things that you might be able to get by every other year. So those are definitely, go into the evaluation. The Orduck.
Kind of makes you want to start your own company. Commissioner Frazier?
I know back in the day, if I were parking a lot of work, there, there's a rental place that has those little stripe machines, you could just walk behind and have a spray can. Maybe commissioners could volunteer, one of Blake's guys stand behind with the police cars, a person going for a walk up and down the street would be able to stripe things. It wouldn't be a bad idea, I mean, just, or have some guy lean out the truck with a spray can or something. But, I mean, joking aside, have you guys looked at, I mean, I know there's the dip in front of LACP and Auto Armor. I think it was a dip from years ago, or something was replaced in years ago. I know they talked about redoing Bear Gorge on that avenue, is there talking to be fixing that eventually? That, you know, if you're going up Front Street towards Auto Armor and LACP, going towards the bypass, there's the dip right there in front of Auto Armor, where you go through a pretty good dip in the road. Is there some, they're in the budget somewhere, maybe fix that eventually next year or something, or? As long as somebody can take care of it. I mean, DPW, a lot of times, you talked about merger of Parks and Rec, and Parks and Rec told me a lot of times, there's problems with Prescott Marina. You guys have been willing to fix it and given them a price, but then Parks and Rec wouldn't go through with the process, so it might not be a bad idea, maybe involve, Parks and Rec has their own, you know, park maintenance department or something like that, instead of you guys deal with it, because I know I've heard that before, of you guys give them a good bid and tell them how much it's going to cost, and then Parks and Rec wouldn't go through with it and just down the line, so it might be a bad idea, one less headache for you guys, but, I mean, I'd volunteer to walk the little spray can, maybe.
We are taking a hard look at it, though. Moving along on the next, on page 114, local streets, very similar to major streets. Again, this is a, basically, a Public Works function that deal with all the routine maintenance of the, of the local streets and, and winter maintenance. We do, you know, we've got it down pretty good, that we spend pretty much about the same amount of money to provide the same service. Occasionally, you know, these, this is one that's really sort of reaction, you know, with, we do take residents' calls and complaints into consideration. So anything like, if you need repair potholes or something like that, we will take out of this account. Once again, winter maintenance will be the plowing. But every time you see a vehicle, you know, on the, doing the street maintenance, it will come out of this fund. Okay, thank question, moving on. Fund 227, page 119. Yeah, yeah. This is sanitation, solid waste. We, uh, we've had a few, quite a few bit, bit of discussions on this, this fund over the past couple of months, the work session. We did take a hard look at this year as we did the bids. We did the bid document to encourage some options. And based on the last work session and then recommendation to the city commission, we're moving ahead with awarding a contract to North Country disposal for city facilities, and then also to operate the rubbish drop-off. And the third area would be the residential portion. And in front of you, we just completed a revised fee schedule for that service. And as we, we mentioned earlier, the rates to keep status quo is being recommended for the bags only is fourteen dollars twenty-five cents. That is down from last year's sixteen dollars. So there is a reduction due to the, the, the bid that we received from Waste Management. And then you, with this process, with this program, you will have an option for the residents to choose a cart, using a cart, or going with your current status with the bags. There's a lot of different options here. We got a lot of work to do for educating the people as we roll this out, but we're comfortable with the numbers that, that we fit into the budget. We base the budget numbers on about a fifty-fifty split for this year. So it's just sort of a, a guess right now.
Commissioner Frazier?
I was just here with the Kurt system, are they going to be letting, is Waste Management going to be in charge of asking us whether we switch the carts or keep the bags, or is that going to be through the city? What's that process going to be?
Yeah.
I know it's nothing right away, but eventually, I know they're going to give you that option. Is it going to be like a next year thing, or is it going to be this year, or is it down the line, or was it?
No, we, Scott's been working with the billing clerk to, to come up with a plan to deploy. It will be, you know, because a lot of the, we have to make sure we get the right rate on the utility bill. We are, you know, having some internal meetings, the best way to do that. I think the importance, the important part of it is to educate the, the public. We gotta, you know, we gotta make it easy to really take a look at it, to make a decision. So those are the things we are working through right now.
Commissioner Conley?
I'm looking at the fee schedule here in front of me, and are we going to charge residents a dollar fifty a month to recycle? If, recycle cart, it'll cost a dollar fifty a month?
What's that? If you want an additional bin.
The standard package includes a garbage cart and a recycling cart, so an additional recycling cart would be a dollar fifty a month.
Okay, all right, thank, thank you. I was just trying to say, if you're going to charge to recycle, it's, it's all single stream, it's all trash, and everything goes in one bin, because it's the same price.
Yep.
Um, just to go back to Commissioner Frazier's comments, our initial plan is to, everybody will be on the bag system, like they have been. And if you want the cart system, we're going to put us, uh, an application process in place where you can opt to the cart system then. So if you do nothing, you'll be fine. You just continue with the bags, continue with the, you know, where you purchase them or where you want to buy them. I think one, I mean, Kurt, Scott's working on, on the contract still, and there's a few details in there we're trying to change, such as, one of the things that struck me during the public comment was, you have to buy fifteen bags at one time. And we're trying to look at a way to see if there's a, you can go buy one bag or, or two bags. And I think the initial information that I heard from Scott was that it looks like we might be able to do that, but in a limited way, I mean, things like that. So there's still a few details to be worked out in that contract, but for the public in general, just continue doing business or doing garbage collection like you have been, and we will inform you of those steps to take if you wish to go to the cart system.
Uh, Commissioner Baldini?
Let me follow up on Commissioner Conley's question. So if I go with carts, I can do single stream recycling?
No, no, it's all dual stream. You, you get two recycling carts and one garbage cart, but if you need an additional cart, there's an additional fee.
My point was, if you have a big enough cart, you can throw it all in one bin and call it trash.
Yeah.
It's the same price.
Yeah, you can do that, yes. But then we'd hunt you down and accuse you of destroying the environment, so, but, yeah.
If, as we're selling trash bags, can we do like Target does, you know, you pay a little extra if you get the drawstring? Because I see that we went back to the open bag with the little short, little ties that are about worthless. That was the last time I bought trash bags, that's, that's what we got.
Well, I seem to remember that being mentioned before, but I forgot about it. I gave Scott a few other little details to try to deal with.
Yeah, you buy the cheap crappy bags at Target and it costs you a buck, and you buy the drawstring ones that cost a dollar ten.
Yeah.
Can we do that?
I can ask.
Thank you.
Sure.
Weren't those bags, like, automatic? I, you, I, whenever I bought them, I was getting, with the ties on top, I heard complaints that people did not like, for some reason, when we started discussing the contracts, we started getting bags in the store that were not of quality, thinner, didn't have the drawstrings.
I think I got them all.
Yeah. You were buying them. I, I would, you know.
I dug to the bottom of the pile and I found the, the old, the good old ones.
With the ties. I would think that should be a requirement, that we have the quality bags.
There is a, in this back, a certain mill that the bags have. We did confront Waste Management at a time, and they did go to a different supplier, and they did own up to that, that it wasn't the same mill. So they definitely, you know, we made them aware of it, and it was taken care of right away.
Will they go back to the original mill strength then?
Oh, yeah.
Drawstring?
We're at the regular strength right now.
Okay. Commissioner Conley?
We went back, because I, I think I got all the, the thin ones without the drawstrings.
Okay.
So if you want them, come pick them up.
Waste Management will probably replace them.
So if there's nothing on, left on solid waste, any further questions? We move on to the fuel system fund, which is a new fund.
Page 135, road maintenance. This is similar to when Dennis spoke about the road safety fund. This is Lundine. Again, the money, the money that we do get from Lundine is being allocated for the Wright Street project.
Are we receiving seven hundred thousand from Eagle? Okay, yeah, because we referenced the two hundred thousand earlier.
So, okay, moving on to page 175, fuel system. This is, I mentioned earlier, that this is a, a new account, and I'll have Eric just go through the process of how we established it.
The old way fuel was tracked, it was tied into motor pool, and it was confusing as to how we track the, the surcharges. It was kind of a messy accounting thing that, that Gary's group had to keep track of. So with the new building, we went to separating the fuel fund into its own enterprise fund out of the motor pool, just to kind of clean it up and make it easier to track everything. As part of this new fuel fund, the cost to, we, we hadn't, you know, updated numbers on the cost to install the new fuel depot, so the surcharge was based on what it would actually cost to replace. So we ended up increasing the surcharge, it was about seven cents a gallon, I believe, we're up to twenty-two cents. In doing so, we did lose one of our customers, I would call them, Maps decided to go elsewhere, but then we did pick up Northern in the process. So as you can see there on page 175, we do service quite a few. We don't make any money off of it, it's just the, the twenty-two cents covers the operations, administration, and then what's left over goes into a fund just for replacement. So in twenty years, twenty-five years, and we have to replace the tanks, we actually have a fund to go to, to do that.
The opening paragraph indicates that the market area public schools are part of the fuel fund.
Yeah, that, that is something that had just changed recently. They went out for bid, they went out for bid, and I think they're going to go with a private entity.
Commissioner Frazier?
This is about, you know, the state takes a few cents away from the gas prices. Is there anything you go, go, because I know when I took a trip to Menominee, it was like two fifteen, it's two forty-five up here for gas, so I wonder if the Lansing gives us a few more cents. I know it's obviously more expensive to haul the full fuel from Green Bay to Marquette than from Menominee, costs a few extra bucks to haul it, but thirty-six, that was for two hour drive is a little much, so hopefully Lansing should give us a few more bucks since they're charging a lot more up here or something, because, I mean, that's, that can be crazy, so.
Yeah, when we, we buy, we, we buy from the open market, it's one of those, it's, it's one of the special purchasing agreements I think you guys have approved in the past. It's because when you buy it, you have to buy the next day because the prices float so much. So we go out there, we get three bids, and, and we go with the lowest one, and they're usually pretty close, but everything comes out of Green Bay, like, like you said. So we're, we're buying the wholesale rate.
So if you buy at that rate, you avoid certain taxes?
Since we're a government entity, we don't pay certain taxes on it, that's correct. Some, some things are figured in there, they're automatic, but some of the taxes we do not pay. And so that's why, what you see on here for our users, they're all nonprofit, you know, Amcabs, you know, and Marquette Housing and such, they're all nonprofit, because the, for-profit entity technically would have to pay the tax then, and we'd have to add that on.
So where'd Maps go to buy gas if, I mean, if they?
I, I heard, I heard that, yeah, I heard they bet it out, and I think Crest won it.
Who's supplying them?
Can we talk about this in private? No, I mean, you know, they, they just found, they actually went out for quotes and received a quote that was the wholesale price. I'll be interested to see how that works out, because like, like Eric was saying, you know, we offer, you buy gas and the price fluctuates from time to time when you purchase the, to fill the tank. And the quote they received apparently was for nine months or twelve months, which I don't know how a gas supplier can do that based on the fluctuation on the market. So it'll be interesting to see how it works out for them, but they, they found a local vendor willing to, to do that, so.
A retail vendor, obviously.
Yes, yes.
Okay, who's paying more taxes?
Well, they don't have to pay the taxes. Maps doesn't have to pay a tax, so it's a wholesale, they're paying wholesale from a local vendor that, by my estimation, is not profiting at all based on the wholesale price they're selling them the gas. Does that make sense? It's like the vent.
You sell to the schools.
Yeah.
School, yeah, you just get a tax credit number, yeah.
They get a break on those taxes if you sell it to the school?
They don't have to pay the tax that we pay them.
Yeah, the school doesn't have to pay a tax.
I was under the impression that only a non-pro, a nonprofit, like the city, escapes the taxes.
No, any nonprofit or municipality or, uh, uh, publicly funded entity.
Okay, then I can see why they could look around, I mean, but if you had to buy gas, the gas pump at a regular retail.
Yeah.
You're automatically paying more.
Oh, yeah, a lot more.
Okay, so they get a break because Maps?
Right, but.
But the price fluctuates, so.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I'm waiting to see how it works for them, because I, I don't know how the supplier can do what they said they could do. I mean, we can't do it, and I don't know how, how they can do it.
We just charge the everyday price plus twenty-two cents.
Oh, we charge the wholesale price.
Wholesale everyday price plus twenty-two cents.
Yes, to cover our expenses. It's my understanding that the, the vendor in the school case is just charging them the wholesale, period.
Yeah, though, okay.
With no surcharge.
It'll be worth it at the end to see how they did.
Yeah, so I just don't want too many people to know about it, because then they won't buy gas from us, if it works.
Unless we come out of here. Unless we come out ahead. Unless we provide a better price, is what I meant to say. I'm sorry I asked that.
Yeah, so, moving along, um, the next, uh, few budgets, uh, starts the, um, utility portion. I think, uh, as Gary mentioned in his transmittal letter, uh, the utilities, the stormwater, water and sewer, the budget is based on a zero increase for those, uh, utilities. So, that's, uh, that's for, um, stormwater, uh, water and sewer. Uh, the first utility talked about is the Stormwater Utility, um, page one seventy-seven. This is a, uh, we have a fact sheet that sort of just gives a few program statistics. Uh, this is a, this is a budget that we work closely with, with Ed Geary Department. They do a lot of work out of this budget for design, for reconstruction, and then also Public Works, uh, uses it, uh, the, the cost for maintaining the stormwater system comes out of this budget. So, if, uh, you know, the fact, the fact sheet, uh, gives a little bit of a background of the system itself.
Commissioner Plard?
Kurt, I just have an off, off-the-cuff question, just, just for my own curiosity. Several years back, we, we had to allow people to run water to, uh, keep pipes from freezing. Does that cost the city?
Oh, yeah.
That's all, and is it, how, just out of, um?
I, I could touch on that now, or maybe during the water.
Oh, yeah, okay, you're, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Commissioner Baldini?
We have here, uh, in a number of these that you've identified, the, uh, sidewalks and so on and so forth, College Avenue Reconstruction, Presque Isle, and Herbert Court, Herbert Court to Seventh, okay? Is, is this premature? We don't know what they're gonna do with the hospital property?
Yeah, I, I'd refer that to our engineering department. Um, that is in the, uh, I believe, capital outlay for next year.
Yeah, I, I saw that, and I was just wondering, we don't know what they're gonna do yet. I mean, what if they say, we're gonna tear everything down, and, uh, I, I, I don't know what they're gonna do.
Yeah, I believe the infrastructure we're talking about is in the, would be in the streets, you know, and, and whatever would be placed there would, would still, um, need to be addressed.
But it might be worth us saying, you know, depending what they do, because, um, we have been known sometimes to say, well, it's their capital outlay, we're gonna do it. Well.
I can't speak on behalf of the engineering, but I'm quite sure that as they, you know, as they go into design, those are all taken into consideration. Um, on the expense side, uh, once again, it's the utility fund. And zero percent increase is, uh, being recommended at this time. Construction, routine maintenance, administration makes up the expenses. Couple highlighted areas under the notes, um, covers, uh, some of the capital improvement projects that will utilize the, uh, Stormwater Utility. On the last, uh, note, um, let's see, uh, five-five-five-four-six-three-eight-oh-one, had some preliminary discussions with, uh, the city manager and, uh, you know, Spirit Watershed, you know, has, has partnered with the city on, uh, many projects. I did include, uh, twenty thousand dollars in, in the Stormwater Budget for, um, you know, for projects as approved by city manager and ultimately probably the city commission. So, that's, uh, something that we've put in, back in the budget with a note, um, specifically, uh, bring that to the commission's attention. Also, um, in that, uh, under eight-oh-one, um, the City Marquette in partnership with, uh, um, Spirit Watershed, we did, uh, receive, uh, uh, news that we, we were awarded the, uh, a Great Lakes Restoration Initiative, um, grant for approximately two-hundred-eighty-eight thousand dollars. That's for the Holly Street, uh, Storm Drain. I believe, uh, we sent out, a press release was sent out on, uh, I believe, on, uh, Friday. In that grant application that I did bring to the city commission earlier on, to submit the application, is a possible, um, we, a ten thousand dollar in-kind cash match from the City Marquette. So, that's, uh, included in this, this budget here. And, uh, so those are, uh, you know, two main items I bring to the city commission.
Commissioner Conley?
So, this is an enterprise fund. It's funded by stormwater fees on the, on the water bill.
Moving along, um, to, uh, Fund Five-Ninety, Wastewater Treatment Facility. First on the fee schedule on page, uh, thirty-nine. Once again, we do look at these fees every year. Um, you know, we look at, uh, you know, how we're doing and, you know, um, you know, the actual cost to treat, treat, uh, wastewater or outside waste, or, um, provide services to the, um, public. One number I just, uh, um, received was, uh, I just calculated was the groundwater, uh, dewatering within the sewer district. That would be, uh, point three-one-one cents per gallon. That's based on our per-unit charge plus a twenty-five percent administration fee. I did, uh, increase, uh, laboratory analysis, um, from eighteen dollars to twenty dollars, to be, uh, consistent with, uh, my, uh, water treatment plant. We really don't get any revenue on that.
Commissioner Conley?
What's, what's groundwater dewatering?
Um, if they're doing a construction project, we have a program in place that, a permit process. Instead of, uh, dewatering it out into, uh, um, a storm drain, eventually into the lake, we, uh, we, uh, through the permit process, we have them take an analytical of the, the water they wish to discharge in the sanitary. And if it meets all our conditions for, um, you know, contamination and certain levels, we, uh, we accept it as certain gallons, you know, per, uh, per minute that we can accept without hitting, uh, hurting our biological, uh, treatment.
So, that goes into the sanitary as opposed to the storm?
Yep. They do have an option to apply for a state permit to, uh, go through into us, um, into the storm drain, if they wish to go that process.
So, what would be an example of the groundwater that you'd be draining?
Like, right down there by, uh, Berwick Avenue where they're building the parking deck. The, uh, the developer and the contractor went through our permit process, and, uh, just, uh, received a, um, request today that they, uh, discharge into our, uh, um, sanitary sewer, and it will be metered at this rate. And, um, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a good, uh, program, not only for the developer, it, it does cover the cost of treating that, that waste. And we know, we do know what we're getting to. Moving on to the, uh, budget on one seventy-nine. On the fact sheet, um, I do, uh, point out one error under, uh, authorized positions. I do share this forward at this budget with my staff, and, uh, lab technician brought it my attention that, uh, he really isn't getting a pay cut, so that should be, uh, fifty-two thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars. Uh, once again, uh, the gallons of wastewater treated, um, they've been pretty, pretty consistent last few years. And, uh, the wastewater treatment plan is owned by the City Marquette, Marquette Township and Chalkley Township. Eighty-five percent, um, for the city, um, ten percent for, uh, Chalkley, and five percent. And we operate it under, uh, the DEQ MPDS permit. And one note, um, this last couple, or commission meeting or two ago, the city commission authorized us to sell one percent capacity of, uh, our plant. So, those, um, those, um, percentages will reflect probably more next year's budget. That won't, the sale won't happen until actually the, um, the casino is hooked up into the, the system. And I anticipate maybe fifty-six thousand dollars, and that will go directly to, uh, the city's sewer fund, or, or Gary.
And Kurt, what's the capacity of that treatment plant is? We have a lot of capacity left, is that correct?
Yeah, our capacity hydrologically is nine million gallons. Average, it's three-point-eight-five million gallons. Uh, we do have capacity still available. When the plant was updated back in, um, two thousand and six, all those, that was all taken consideration for, you know, at least twenty, twenty-five years. Moving on to the expenses. And once again, revenue comes from, uh, the sources of the two townships of the city. Another one to the other truck wastewater, that, that one is sort of a hit and miss. This last year, we've, uh, we've had some good, uh, requests for, uh, people bringing in trucked wastewater to our plant. So, uh, our revenue was up from last year. So, uh, sometimes you'll get a call that someone's doing a project that needs to bring you, uh, you know, quite a bit of, uh, trucked wastewater that, you know, to the plant itself. We charge about ten cents a gallon for that.
Commissioner Baldini?
Question, we're gonna save money on this plant because of Johnson Control, new modern equipment that we couldn't afford before, maybe we can now. We're gonna put it in, so are the townships gonna come to us and say, okay, you have new equipment, the cost is reduced, where's our share of the reduction? Though we're spending the money?
Yeah, that, that will be, that's reflected in the budget. Um, this is a budget that is based on, uh, you know, expenses. So, your revenue per unit rate is set on your expenses. So, the lower expenses, you know, the lower the per-unit rate that is charged to the townships and the city.
Okay, but the per-unit rate is gonna go down because we, the city, are spending the money?
No, the, the, the townships, uh, pay, um, a percentage of all the capital cost. So, they, they are paying a portion of any.
The Johnson Control, okay, I didn't know that, thank you, okay.
And we have, um, you know, we, we, we've, uh, involved the Market Area Wastewater Advisory Board about the, the project and Johnson Controls, the project. But mostly, again, we've been able to, uh, really control our costs, I think. You know, a few, uh, repair and maintenance, that seems to be a tough one. Believe it or not, our plant's in upgrade, we're, be going on ten years. What I've noticed, a lot of the pumps and equipment, um, you know, the repair cost of buying parts have just gone skyrocketed. So, you know, that, that's what, uh, we're, um, we're facing a lot with, uh, when we do, uh, a repair of, uh, equipment. Oh, yeah, one, uh, Mike just mentioned, uh, I put on the, uh, the agenda for Monday night. We had a failure back in, uh, last December. Our methane gas line, it's in, uh, inside a three-hundred-fifty-thousand gallon digester. And that's where, uh, that's a critical piece of, uh, um, pipe, because it takes the methane out of our digester and uses the methane in our boiler. And we were able, we, we were unable to use that, one of the digesters for, uh, well, we still can't use it until that's repaired. Fortunately, we were able to, uh, do some process changes to increase the methane production in the other digester. But, um, our met, our natural gas did go up about seven, eight thousand dollars last year because of that failure. Um, I did, uh, got the bid documents done and bids in to do that repair, and, uh, that repair will cost approximately, um, fifty-five thousand dollars. And we plan on doing that, um, you know, within next, uh, next month. Yeah, ninety thousand, sixty to ninety thousand, I estimate.
That wasn't a Johnson Control update?
No, that, this, but this is nothing to do with Johnson.
Nothing with Johnson.
No, they weren't, you know, this is a project that's not related to that.
It's being paid for out of the sewer fund, but something happened, I think, in February, if I remember.
In December, yeah, I think, January, January. Yeah. And, and again, this is one of those unexpected, uh, it wasn't budgeted for. One thing at the Market Area Wastewater Plant, we do carry a reserve fund that's mandated by the state. When we went out and got, uh, SRF funding, and, uh, we have about five-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars in that fund. So, um, the recommendation for, uh, Monday is to, uh, you know, pay the, uh, um, this project out of the reserve fund. And that's what really that fund is for, you know, for replacement.
Commissioner Frazier?
Are all the septic pump out trucks, you know, those trucks with the pump out, is they, they pump out the porta-potties and everybody's waste? Do those come to the, your, the wastewater and then pump out there, or you charge per gallon for them, or how's that work? I assume that's what they probably do, I don't know for sure.
I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. That's one of the things I'm looking at right now in the next couple of months. The state has a, a law that requires septic tanks to dispose of a facility that accept, uh, septic within forty-five miles. At this time, we, we have not received it. However, I've been looking at different treatment processes that you can purchase, like a package that can treat the septic in a safe manner. The investment might be a couple hundred thousand dollars, but, um, I think there definitely is a market, uh, of value without upsetting the plant. There's possibility that maybe up to fifty to eighty thousand dollars a year in revenue. So, I'm definitely, uh, that's one of my projects.
That's, that's good extra income for the plant, you mean, to keep it updated, you know, all those, there's several of the facilities around that, you know, pump out everything and be good, it'd be great for you to have extra income, you know, for the plant to keep it up, running, it's a great idea, good, good job, Kurt.
Yep, Ishbing, uh, does it right now, and they receive quite a bit of revenue. And, uh, I have been requested by some of the local septic tank, so, but thanks for bringing that up. Moving along to, uh, water and sewer. I do have one fee schedule that deals with the water plant on page forty. Market Water Filtration Plant, it's a certified lab. We do bacterial analysis for, uh, for contractors, for the health department. Basically, what we're doing is we're testing their water for, uh, making sure it's safe. I did, uh, I did up these about four years ago from like twelve dollars to eighteen, and then up to twenty. I did a little bit of research on, uh, see if the twenty dollars, it does cover a cost. You know, Ishbing charges thirteen dollars, the state, they don't provide the service anymore. So, uh, I do think, uh, twenty dollars is a, is a fair, fair amount. We do receive, uh, I think, decent amount of revenue. The staff is. The staff is there twenty-four-seven, so it's, it's the, the cost, it doesn't take them away really of doing any, uh, another job. So it's sort of a, um, uh, a job that they can do, you know, while they're working. Moving to page, uh, one-eighty-two. I got two fact sheets, one is a water filtration plant. It, uh, operates twenty-four-seven, we have one supervisor for operators. Once again, we're, our, our job is to make sure all the drinking water is safe. Work under the state Safe Water Drinking Act. Once again, the, uh, our, uh, pumpage, uh, water production is, uh, pretty much has been stabilizing the last couple of years. Moving on to the fact sheet for the, uh, the, the other portion of the water. Is, the fact sheet is water distribution. It gives, um, basically our, uh, our department authorized positions, water main repairs, maintenance. Couple of programs that were mandated by the state, uh, cross connection and, uh, lead and copper sampling. Back this year, every three years, we have to do-
Commissioner Conley?
This year, we'll be doing, uh, every three years, we have to do a lead and copper sampling of thirty-six homes in the, uh, community. And we'll be doing that in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, getting back to the water plant, did the, is the intake pipe, pipe project complete and did it go as expected?
Yeah, once again, thank you, uh, for asking that. There's a good news story on that. I just, um, got about two-thirty. The project is complete, um, everything went flawlessly. As they went down, uh, did their initial dive and their, uh, their, uh, a further evaluation of what joints needed to be done. They determined that, uh, it didn't need as many joints as was bid on. And also that the deepest they had to go was sixty feet. And it would have had an additional cost if they had to go below sixty feet. They were, they were only allowed a diver forty-eight minutes per day. They did bring in a couple of their divers and, uh, believe they, they finished the project about three and a half days. I did, uh, reach out to our, uh, Fish Beck and asked if they would, uh, talk to the contractor and see if they would do a price adjustment. And originally, the, um, the, the bid was for a hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars with a contingency of a fifteen percent for a hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand. Just received word that, uh, they readjusted the price for, um, total cost of a hundred-and-fifty-one thousand. So that was a good news, news story. And, um, excellent, excellent, excellent video. I've got about an hour and a half of video, I'm editing it down to about five minutes. So I'm gonna share that with the, you know, with the commission and the city. Pipe's in good shape too.
Commissioner Plard?
It's, it's the divers underneath the water, and I do have some photos of the barges too. Yes, it is, yeah, yeah. For spec, they had to make, um, you know, um, video what they're doing. Once again, on the, uh, water side, um, projected revenues, um, and other revenues. Once again, uh, Gary mentioned here earlier that, uh, this budget is, uh, based on a zero percent increase at this time. The water plant, uh, you know, that, 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 uh, operation pretty much is, uh, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty stable each year. I do have a, a little bit of increase under, uh, maintenance supplies. There's a part of our hypochlorite system uses, uh, um, a, a fuel cell that will, I replaced one this year and, uh, plan on placing, replacing the other one for approximately twenty thousand dollars. But, um, mostly the water distribution, you know, the division, you know, department goes about their businesses. It's a pretty routine. Definitely, we're, uh, we're, we're busy a lot of times. Our, uh, the, we haven't had, uh, cold weather issues in a couple of years. Any, for any questions, we can move on to five-nine-two sewer. Similar to, uh, you know, water, this is a, a utility. And, uh, this budget does not contain any, uh, uh, increase. And, uh, back sheet on, uh, one-eighty-eight gives the, um, typical, uh, operations, maintenance, um, program statistics. One thing about this budget is, um, you know, it's a, it's, it's a challenging budget. Lot of, uh, uh, it's a tough one to plan your daily activities on. We do get a lot of calls for backups and we do check them out. And most of the time, they're on the, the residence side of the, the main, so. We do a lot of, uh, structure repair, jet rotting and pretty much, uh, uh, operational maintenance to maintain a good, uh, reliable system. That's the key.
Commissioner Conley?
So our, when we negotiated the rate that we charged the township for water and, uh, we, we used a consultant, do we set our, our rates to our residents, we using a rate consultant, or do we set water and sewer rates internally?
Oh, okay, um, okay, for the, uh, the sewer, the rates of sewer, okay, the wastewater plant, basically, it's, it's a per unit, uh, rate that charges to the city Marquette, the Chalkley Township and Marquette. We all pay the, the, um, the, uh, a rate for that. That number that the city, that's in the, um, the wastewater treatment budget is the same number that's under, uh, under the sewer fund, wastewater services. Under five-nine-two, five-six-one, nine-two-four, of two million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand dollars. So that number is built into the sewer budget that is used to charge the city, uh, residents. And then the, uh, we do have a rate consultant right now, under contract, that is doing a pretty detailed, uh, deep dive into the city's wa, city, water and sewer. And basically, that, uh, that's, that's on hold right now until probably early, early, uh, next year. I think, as Gary mentioned during his, uh, opening remarks, um, once that, uh, the Johnson Control numbers come in, we'll incorporate that into that, that, uh, uh, rate study. I've seen the draft of the rate study, we're probably ninety-five percent done. And once, uh, once we get those updated numbers, we, they can simply plug them in their Excel spreadsheets.
So essentially, we, we use the same process for ourselves that we do for, um, other municipal, municipal entities? Like, we use the same consultant?
Oh, no, no, this, this consultant, it's a financial rate consultant specializes in water sewer rates. So it's, it's, it's a very highly specialized, uh, type of, uh, type of work.
But is it the same company that did the township?
Oh, yes, it is, yes, it is.
That's what, that's what I'm getting at.
Yes. So if there's no more questions, um, I'll have Eric talk about, uh, the new municipal service center fund and, uh, six-three-two, page two-hundred.
All right, here we are getting into the home stretch here, the new service center. This is, I don't wanna call it a shot in the dark, but this is our best guess. I mean, since we're starting with something brand new, we, we really don't know, you know, what are the utilities gonna be? We have an idea, um, you know, as far as there's maintenance supplies, I know everything's new and everything's under warranty, but there's so much more equipment in this building than the last building as far as filter changes and, and gas detector calibrations. And it's just a, a, a much more complex facility. So we, we did our best to, to take a stab at it here to, to try to, you know, incorporate what we think is gonna be, the cost to maintain the building and it all, you know, when, everything gets paid through, through the building rent. And you'll see, I, I believe when Dennis was up here, he talked about the building rent that he had to pay. All the departments pay that are out of that facility, pay the rent, and that's really what pays for the building as a whole. And when we get to Motor Pool, you'll see that they really make a majority of, a vast majority of the rent because of, of what they do there. Gonna anticipate, it's probably gonna take two to three years to really level it off to get a really good feel for what it's gonna take to operate the building. The one item of note here that you see at the bottom in our seven-forty account in the notes is, um, we were unable to, to purchase furnishings for the new, uh, training room and some of the offices in the lower level. So we are requesting, um, forty-eight thousand dollars for that. The, the offices, there's only a few of them, a lot of it comes down to the, the training room, since that room never existed, even the old building. You know, that would be a room that could be used for, you know, any city function. You know, we had voting in there, you know, we're, you know, scrambling for tables to try to get in there for the voters and things like that. So, uh, that room could be used for multiple uses and people could make use of, of that, um, furniture. Any, any questions on MSC?
Commissioner Frazier?
With your new little garage you guys built, what's gonna happen with the other, you know, you redid the other buildings to, for temporary, while the other building got torn down? You're gonna keep that facility open just for like small vehicle repair and then keep the big garage for all the big trucks? Or how are you gonna use the other facility, you know, the other facility's been like the main DPW for the season to get you by, but not even the new building? You're gonna keep the old buildings just for like routine maintenance and smaller vehicles, then use the big building for any heavy duty stuff? Or what's your kinda plan, you're just gonna feel it out, see to what to do, or?
So we'll probably utilize the majority of that space as cold storage. So in the other, other site that we were at, we had that cold storage facility so that we could, you know, keep some things inside during the winter. I mean, we had, uh, all kinds of different things back there and, and we'll probably continue to do that. So while we did heat those buildings for, to run operations out of last year, this, you know, going forward, we're gonna, you know, disable the, you know, we'll drain them down, get rid of the water, we're not gonna heat them to have that expense. And it'll just be cold storage for, for right now, until we see the need to expand, we'll be able to turn them on if we need to. There is one smaller green building, we called it the tennis building when the, the old sports plex was there, that'll stay heated. We're gonna utilize our waste oil burner there. We generate so much waste oil instead of paying somebody to take it away, we burn it for heat, um, to make use of it, the, the resource. So we'll keep that building heated and that's where we keep things that we need to keep warm for the winter, such as, uh, gravel for emergency digs or CP seven for road patching that you'll see us doing around in the winter.
That's a good idea, we have a waste oil burner, work to, it's, they're very handy to-
Yeah, it's, it's-
Glad you get good, and stuff here, you're gonna just kinda feel how, how the new building's gonna be and see if you could use that, just keep the ability available for cold storage, it's a good idea just to, maybe, you know, some of the communities complained about some storage being used at some other places, maybe use that facility for more storage, you know, cold storage for just a little bit of everything, it's good, you're, you're using for something.
And the one project I know we are gonna do in it this year is, uh, Presque Isle Marina, the docks, they get in such bad shape, you know, there, those, all those docks there and we were able to, uh, bring them inside now and, and work on those, we'll have enough room to do that and we can work through that through the winter.
Commissioner Conley?
Eric, you had said that you weren't able to do the furnishings in the current fiscal year.
Not, not all the frains, we, we furnishings, we did do some of them within the project.
So in other words, are you saying that this, these for the forty-eight thousand didn't fit under the eighteen-point-four cap?
That is correct.
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's a little bit about, well, we didn't get around to ordering the furnishings, well, that's in a, it's eighteen-point-four-four-eight then, right?
Yeah.
I see, thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
Hey, Mike can buy some new furniture for his office, it's fancy, if you could use his stuff, I mean, move, I mean, there is a very conference table on there, I think he moved out, you could use that, I mean, there's gonna be, make a, just make furnitures from all over the place, just throw in there for now.
You know, we are gonna reuse that, we're gonna use that in City Hall. Part of the renovation, um, with City Hall is, we're really lacking on conference space. So the renovation's gonna allow us to create two new conference rooms and we'll definitely reuse that furniture here in, in City Hall. No other questions, I'll move on to Motor Pool. Looking at Motor Pool, page two-oh-three on the expenses.
It's page two-oh-two.
Two-oh-two for the fact sheet, two-oh-three for the expenses. The, um, we're, our capital outlay is, is down a little bit this year, you know, we've been very fortunate to be able to, to keep moving forward with, um, with getting some of those critical pieces of equipment. So compared to last year, we're actually down about a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. We're, I like to use the term, we're getting healthy again, I mean, we've, you've, you've allowed us to, to get some pickup trucks and things like that, those really bad condition items to start getting those off our plate and replacing those. So we, we were actually able to drop that a little bit. When you look at, to take capital outlay out of the, uh, out of the picture, we are up, um, probably two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars from last year, which is about a twelve percent increase. And a lot of that is wages and benefits, you know, and I think it came up earlier before with MERS. I mean, I think the MERS charge just for this account went up forty thousand. Labor went up, you know, due to contracts, health insurance goes up, so that, that took up a good portion of it. And then the other one was the office rental, um, being that now that the office, it, it, the, the rental price goes to pay for the new service center. And, um, if you, you look and see there, the Motor Pool does, um, take up a majority of that service center rent. Some of the other items of note, if you look down in the notes, um, if you remember back in the spring, I believe it was, we were able to get a used plow out of South Range, uh, and we, we almost stole it, I mean, it was such an excellent deal. And, uh, the only thing is that it came with some airport, airport style blades. We could use them to plow, but they're a little fragile for what we do in the town. And I believe when we posed it to you earlier in the year, you know, when we went to purchase it, we knew we'd have to put a new front blade on it and a new underbody to, to kinda make it, um, equivalent with the rest of the fleet. The truck is perfectly fine otherwise, it's just the plowing, um, vehicle, uh, parts for that. So that's why you see that, uh, thirty thousand dollar charge there to seven-seven-five. And then in the other notes, that's our capital outlay, um, that we've gone through. The, the big one here is, uh, front end loader and then the roll-off truck. And then, of course, we do, um, police vehicles and some other smaller pickups, uh, for various departments. And, you know, some of the other cre, increases that you'll see is, um, just in general, like in the seven-seven-five, besides that thirty thousand dollar hit with the plow parts, it's just, everything's going up. You know, it's hard to buy a, a loader tire now for less than five grand. I mean, the, the cost of, of parts and even the services that we get all the way from the, you know, the grease supplier, you know, or the people that come and change out our degreasing equipment, everything's going up and that, uh, just reflects that. Is there any questions in Motor Pool?
Well, we wanna thank, uh, Kurt and Eric and also Dennis earlier. A lot of information, uh, and they did a very good job of streamlining it. So that concludes the session for tonight. The next scheduled meeting, uh, budget session is one week from today at five-fifteen. And that'd be the, uh, I guess you could call the friends of, of Marquette, like the DDA, the library, LDFA, Brownfield. And also a couple of departments which due to conflicts couldn't present earlier, but we'll also have the IT budget and the police budget. And then if all goes well, we'll turn it over to you for your final discussions. And we'll schedule a public hearing for September eleventh. So there'll be an additional opportunity for people to speak on the budget if they care to at September eleventh. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That concludes the presentations. If it does, we're going to move to our last public comment, going to open public comment, if anybody wishes to address the commission. Does anybody wish to address the commission? Anybody see none, we're going to close public comment, comments from the commission. We'll start with Commissioner Plard.
Just a quick comment, especially to city manager Mike Angeli. I got emailed today about the new website, I got to look at it, and I want to put a shout out to Sean Hobbins for working very, very hard. Did a great job with it in your office, Mike also, because you saved a lot of money, there was, that, a lot of people don't realize websites cost a lot of money. Sean did a great job with it, and I appreciate that. Put a shout out and a salute to Sean for the work that he did for us, if you would.
Commissioner Conley?
My comments too, good job, that is, it's a, in one word, it's useful. It's easy to, to navigate through, our citizens can get to what they need to within a click or two, and it's all right out there. It's very well designed, and it's a bonus that it's saving money. So, thank you again for bringing that in-house. It was certainly a really, it's, it's a website the city can now be proud of. It's now at marquettemi.gov and not mqtcty.org. So it's a new address, I don't know if you took the old website down, or if you're going to run them parallel for a while.
It was on the verge of crashing today, so it's probably.
But, but, well, we, we certainly have a, a very attractive and useful replacement, and a great job by Sean, and thanks to the city manager for saving a lot of money.
Mayor Pro Tim Baldini?
The website is, yeah, thank you, it is more attractive and more accessible, workable. Harbor Fest this weekend in town, another event, and thank you for the work on the budget. It's, it's, it's a major project, but it's important for us to review this, so thanks.
Commissioner Frazier?
No, no, I couldn't look up, I say, what to put over recycling, usually look at city websites, see what to put over recycling, that's why the website was down for, this, my wife said, it's not working, it says down for maintenance, I'm like, oh, that's, I did some digging through Google and I found out what to put out, good idea, and, you know, go back to garbage, maybe we can put out whatever bags we want and just get out of the city, we had tags, you just put a tag on it, you know, the city come up with their own tags, maybe a, a city logo, or maybe a picture bike on there or something, you know, and you could put it on there and say, okay, this is my new bag, charge the same amount, same logo, little tags, give everybody, sell, wherever you got to pick them up for, a little, maybe the people that do, all police department cars could come up with a little sticker as far as to say, this is a city bag, now put sticker on it and call it good. Maybe that's a good way to do it.
Commissioner Ken Bensy?
Just thanks to city staff for doing a good job on the budget this year.
I also want to thank the department heads for, and the staff for all presenting today and having the budget ready, thank you. City manager?
I'll also echo the thanks to Kurt and Eric, and I'm sure Scott would have been here if he wasn't on vacation. But also, thank you for the comments regarding Sean, I mean, that, staff, including him, he, him, went through the budget or the bidding process, and the, and the costs were enormous. I mean, the initial costs were not outside the budget, but the legacy costs, you know, the, the maintenance costs were, were just ridiculous, so Scott, or Sean volunteered to take a stab at creating it. He's, he's never done one before, but he's in that age group where all they got to do is get near a computer and it, it osmosis or something, I mean, it just, they absorb it. And he did a really nice job, and he did a real, he did real thorough work with staff regarding input and things of that nature, and, you know, he, he did a fine job, and I agree, so that's all I have, thank you.
We are adjourned.